You want to do the votes, the old cash mark? You want to do the votes, the old cash mark?
Yeah. Anything I can help with?
Yeah, it's easy, it's good.
Yeah.
Do you want a water? Water?
I don't.
How are you? Water?
Please.
Water? Water? Or that coat?
Yep.
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate you going to get it for us.
Yes.
Should be helpful. Do you know what's going on? We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. I may use the gavel tonight. Thank you for your patience as we work out a few technical issues tonight. Welcome to the Rockingham County School Board meeting for April 27th, or April 26th, 2021. We have to approve an agenda for this evening. Board members, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
The agenda is approved, five zero. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Baylor.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see a larger and larger crowd all the time. We're in the business of people and we're glad to have more and more people back with us. Chair Reed, members of the school board, Dr. Scheichel and all others in attendance tonight, welcome to East Rockingham High School. We appreciate the opportunity to host the April 26th meeting of the Rockingham County School Board. East Rock is a wonderful school and a super community. We're pleased to be able to recognize several members of the East Rockingham High School family tonight for their accomplishments, their character, and their service. At this time, I would like Abby Green and her parents to come forward. I want everybody to see these folks while we're talking, saying good things about them, okay? So you guys just come down. If you don't mind standing over here somewhere, that'd be awesome because I want everybody to see you. So I'm going to read you some things about Abby. Abby is our Brittany Lamb, Kelly Coggsdale, Character Counts, Female Student of the Month for April 2021. And I'm going to say a lot of good things about her from her teachers. According to Abby's physics teacher, Mr. Amy, Abby is such a pleasant lady who is passionate about several things, including reading and the environment. Rather than just say it's a passion, she has gone above and beyond to promote reading through her work as a library assistant and has started a program to recycle used whiteboard markers which typically get thrown away. She was a strong member of the Scholastic Bowl team and golf team and has been an integral to the last several school plays with her work behind the scenes. Ms. McDonald, Abby's Spanish teacher states, "Abby Green's an extremely hard worker whose critical thinking I could not have gone without these last four years." She has devoted countless hours of her own free time to help the school musical and in the library, in addition to challenging, challenging course load and being involved in clubs and sports. As a matter of fact, last week, she went out with the Scholastic Bowl team and you guys cleaned up Rockingham Pike for the Adopt a Highway. So I'll throw that in there too. Personally, I've had the pleasure to work with Abby as well. Two years ago, we were in dire need of some biology tutors to help our sophomores, who are now seniors, finish their work and prepare for the SOL test. Abby volunteered her time to help several students and is personally responsible for their success in passing the subject. Abby is a doer and will be an incredible addition to the college of her choice. Abby, the faculty and staff of East Rockingham are proud of you and your accomplishments. You're a young woman of incredible character and conduct. We're also proud of your 4.172 GPA. Abby plans to attend Radford University in the fall of 2021 where she will begin her college career. You have an extremely bright future ahead of you. Thank you for being an extraordinary young lady. I'm honored to recognize you as the Female Character Counts Representative for East Rockingham High School for April 2021.
Hey, Abby. I am so very honored to be able to present on behalf of the school board tonight because Abby and I actually go way back as well. We have been to 4H camp together several times. And I'm not sure if you realize this, Abby, but the Kelly Coggsdale is, was originally the 4H agent for our area. So we have a certificate for you to hang on your wall, a pin to wear near your heart, as I'm sure this award, it's close to my heart because of Kelly. I knew Kelly and I'm sure it'll be close to yours because of the 4H connection. And then we also have a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar. So there you go. Before we run off, introduce the person you brought with you tonight.
This is my mom, Julie Green.
And we'd like to give you a round of applause as well because we know that this starts at home.
I would like for Nathan Sullivan and his parents to come down to the front. The East Rockingham Brittany Lamb, Kelly Coggsdale, Character Counts, Male Student of the Month for April 2021 is senior Nathan Sullivan. According to Nathan's Spanish teacher, Ms. McDonald, Ms. McDonald, you are quoted well tonight. You got your email in quick, alright? Nathan Sullivan is one of the kindest persons I've ever met. He's so positive and always has a smile on his face. He is dedicated to what he loves, and that's music. And should be very proud of his ERHS accomplishments. Ms. Ryan, Nathan's sophomore English teacher states, "I had the privilege of teaching Nathan Sullivan as a 10th and 11th grade student." So she got you two years. "I was impressed with how much of a hard worker he was. He would stay after school to double check on the accuracy of his assignments. Nathan was also helpful to his peers. Many times, he would be my go-to student to help another classmate because I knew he would be patient and kind. Nathan is extremely respectful to his teachers. He's a young man of deep faith and conviction who is committed to doing his best in all his endeavors." Nathan holds a 4.034 GPA and is presently ranked 20th in the ERHS class of 2021. He hopes to continue his education next fall at Bridgewater College and I would bet you that music will be at the center of his studies. The famous American statesman Henry Clay said, "Of all the properties which belong to honorable men, not one is so highly prized as that of character." Congratulations, Nathan. You have it and it certainly is a prize. I'm honored to recognize you as the Male Character Counts Representative for East Rockingham High School for April 2021. Congratulations.
And sadly, I haven't had the pleasure of knowing you, Nathan, but I am very proud of you and the rest of the school board is very proud of you as well. Thank you for the character that you've shown your fellow classmates. And would you like to introduce who you have with you tonight?
I have my mom, Rebecca, and my dad, Randy.
And let's give them a round of applause. Because character really does begin at home and we appreciate everything you've done to raise such a wonderful young man. We also have a Kleins Dairy Bar gift certificate, a pin and a certificate for you. And thank you so much for all you've done for your school.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Nathan. When I'm having a bad day, I just come talk to you. Makes me feel better too. Chris Whitley, if you would, come on down. So I'm going to say some things about Chris. She's our Volunteer of the Year. We like to recognize an outstanding individual as East Rockingham's Volunteer of the Year for 2021. Unfortunately, sometimes it's easy to take people for granted. You see them on a regular basis, you know they're around, you see what gets done, but you forget to say thanks. So we're saying thanks tonight. And over this last year, I haven't seen you much, I haven't seen anybody much, so I miss you. There are many volunteers who work to support the students and programs at East Rockingham High School. This year, we've chosen to acknowledge a parent that has volunteered to support the PTSA at ERHS. Tonight, we'd like to recognize Chris Whitley as the East Rockingham High School Volunteer of the Year. Chris has served a variety of posts for East Rockingham's PTSA from secretary to president over the past seven or eight years. As her kids have come through school, Chris has always been there to support ERHS through her active participation. On numerous occasions, I sent a package agenda out at 10 or 11 o'clock at night hoping desperately that Chris would forward the information to the remainder of the PTSA and she always did and sometimes it was midnight because I got it to her late. Thanks to, uh, thanks to Chris, the ERHS faculty and staff never went hungry during a conference or teacher workday. Thanks to Chris, numerous students have benefited from PTSA scholarships. Thanks to Chris, the ERHS PTSA is a group of doers, not sayers. Chris is always there with a smile. She's always willing to lend a hand. She never takes credit for her actions. She gives all the credit away to other people who often have a lesser role in seeing that it gets done. I just got to tell you that. In all, Chris Whitley has given untold hundreds of hours to East Rockingham High School. As principal, I ask you to continue sending your kids this way. One, because they're incredible people and two, because we need you to stay with us as a volunteer. Thank you, Chris, for the time, energy and enthusiasm that you've given to support students at East Rockingham High School. Congratulations. Thank you so much. You're awesome.
On behalf of the school board, I'd like to thank you for all of your work you've done. And I also kind of, so first, do you have people with you tonight? Oh, they're all volunteering right now is what she said. Of course, the heart of a volunteer, right? But I understand that you have students here, but it's, I'm sure as a fellow volunteer, it's not just your kids that bring you, it's all the kids of East Rock. And I really appreciate all of your work. Thank you. We have a certificate for you as well, as well as a gift certificate to Kleins Dairy Bar that I'm sure you will share with your kids, right?
For, for our school recognition tonight, I would like to turn it over to Brandy Strickler, our, one of our assistant principals, and she's going to introduce the ERHS 2021 cheerleading team and discuss their accomplishments. Ladies, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to recognize the ERHS 2020-21 Competition Cheer Team and their successes this season. But let's kind of start back at the beginning. The Competition Cheer Team kicked off a new, unique and shortened season on February 1st. On February 8th, a week after they started, they began a two-week quarantine which consisted of some Zoom workouts and practices. The team was scheduled to return to in-person practices on February 22nd, but we had a snow day. So they kicked off again February 23rd. Needless to say, the start of the season was not what they had anticipated. The team had their first competition on March 11th, right here at ERHS. They came out with an impressive win, but didn't stop there. They went on to compete in two of the Valley District tournaments, competing against teams in a higher division, placing second in one and tying for first in the other. Next up, the Region B Championship and probably everybody's favorite. Probably the toughest region in Division II where only one team would advance to the state championship this year. After a first-round performance where the music didn't work correctly, didn't play, they had to compete counting the counts to the music. They found themselves in second place by only .5. With this close margin in mind, the team took the state for second round and gave a stellar performance, probably the best of the year, that gave them the title of Region B Cheer Champion. Earning a berth in the state cheer competition where they placed third, let's just give that a big round of applause. Needless to say, this was an adventurous year for our Competition Cheer Team, overcoming some obstacles along the way, all the while maintaining sportsmanship and great character. I'd like to share an email that Mr. Baylor received at 2:23 a.m. on Sunday morning. Yeah. Nobody wants to see a 2:23 a.m. email come through. The day after the state competition. "I'm writing to tell you just how impressed I was with your Competition Cheer Team. My daughter cheers for Central and we were at the state competition on Saturday. First off, I would like to say the East Rock team did an amazing job, but even more impressive was the sportsmanship they displayed. Although Central won on Saturday, the last few years, we have felt the heartbreak of coming up just a bit short. It's not an easy situation to be in after all the hard work that goes into getting to the state competition. Please commend your team and coaches on how they conducted themselves. After the first round and knowing they would not move on to the finals, they still supported and congratulated the two remaining teams. The class and sportsmanship they displayed shows the true character of all those involved and they deserve to know it didn't go unnoticed. We wish you and your program nothing but the best in the future. Can't wait to see them win a title." That says it all. So we'd like to recognize the team members and coaches and a couple of the individual awards for this evening. Freshman Haven, you can just stand up, Haven Murky. Haven was First Team All-Region and the Region Cheerleader of the Year. Our sophomores Jade Little, Chrislyn Walls, Lilly Murky, Emily Washington, Copper Step, Peyton Troval, Reagan Voight. Reagan was also Second Team All-Region. Our juniors Gina Lambert, Second Team All-Region, Haley Wolf, Brooke Smith, Natalie Pence, who was First Team All-Region, and our seniors, who I know will be greatly missed, Abby Phillips. Abby was First Team All-Region. Linaya Adamite and Madison Garcia. And our coaches, assistant coaches, Alyssa Breeden, Amanda McAvoy and our head coach, David Lamb, Region B Coach of the Year. We thank you guys so much for all the hard work and I know it wasn't easy, but it was fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strickler. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for being with us this evening. We appreciate it. Our next agenda item is Mr. Fitzgerald. I think you're going to talk about an FFA trip.
Chair Reed, board members and Dr. Scheichel. As you guys know, Career and Technical Education focuses on hands-on experiential learning. Now, a lot of real-life education is conducted through our co-curricular organizations, which are an integral part of every CTE program. This takes a lot of forms with one of those being service learning. During this year's spring break, the Turner Ashby FFA chapter requested and was granted permission by you to travel to Tylerton, Smith Island, Maryland, to conduct a service project that they have been doing for over 20 years, with the exception of last year because of COVID. Tonight, Agricultural Education teacher Brian Krikenberger has some of his FFA members here to tell you about the project. Mr. Krikenberger, would you come up and introduce your students, please?
Thank you. Thank you, school board and Dr. Scheichel, first of all, for giving us the opportunity to travel and continue with our learning experiences. Just the sheer fact of being able to go brought back normalcy as a teacher and to these students that are going to share with you this evening. I have four students here this evening that participated in this wonderful experience to Smith Island. All four are current officers of the Turner Ashby FFA chapter and I'm going to turn it over to them. We have Diana Slagel, Lauren Satterwhite, Lauren Wilburne and Joshua Payne.
Good evening, Chairman Reed, Dr. Scheichel and the members of the board. My name's Lauren Wilburne and I'm the reporter for the Turner Ashby FFA chapter. I, along with three other officers, Diana Slagel, our president, Lauren Satterwhite, our vice president, and Josh Payne, the chaplain. We had the pleasure of accompanying Eric Fitzgerald, the Director of Career and Technical Education here, and Brian Krikenberger, the sponsor for Turner Ashby FFA, to Smith Island in the Chesapeake Bay. Thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to speak to you this evening. As you know, this was Rockingham County's first field trip since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. We wanted to take a moment to share a glimpse of our time on the island. While it was certainly different than the previous trips, which we've all been a part of, this trip was special. TAFFA has had a longstanding kinship with the residents of Smith Island. For many years, we have taken field trips there and through this, we've developed a very strong relationship. When the pandemic hit last year, our trip was canceled, which we were all very sad about. That's why when we were told that Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Krikenberger were taking a few students to Smith Island, we were beyond excited. We all had such a great time that I don't think we can really pinpoint the single best part of the trip, but we each gave it a shot.
As Lauren mentioned earlier, my name is Diana Slagel and my favorite part of going to Smith Island was visiting the home of the resident artist Dennis Clary, excuse me. And what he does is he takes the bottom of crab barrels and he cuts them in half and he paints portraits of them, mostly portraits that he's found on the, or mostly pictures that he's found on the island that really just spoke to him and he depicts them on these crab barrels. And one really spoke to me, as you can see, I'm holding it there. That was my favorite one, so I decided to purchase it from him. And he took us into his home and showed us all of these, so that was, that was really, really special.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Satterwhite. As Lauren mentioned earlier, I am the Vice President of the Turner Ashby FFA chapter. This was my third time going to Smith Island and I have to say it was probably up there as one of the best. My favorite part was just getting to walk around the island and converse with the community members and just observe how different their lives are from ours. It's just really eye-opening for me to understand that even though we live not too far away, that our lives are really different. So that was my favorite part of getting to go to Smith Island for my last time.
I'm Josh Payne. I'm the chaplain of the Turner Ashby FFA chapter, as Lauren mentioned. My favorite part was just being a part of the family on the island. It's truly like a big family there. The islanders are so nice and friendly and appreciative of everything. It's great to be able to cook the chicken barbecue for them every time we go. And it's also just a great time to sit down and hear the awesome stories that they have to tell.
Honestly, for me, just being on the island was amazing. Seeing all the people and getting to hear their stories, as my friends mentioned, was one of the best parts. I think my absolute favorite thing, though, was how much I learned while I was there. Diana, Lauren and I had the opportunity to go and meet and talk to Mary Ada Marshall, who's one of the residents on the island, and we were given the opportunity to watch her make the signature Smith Island cake, which is the state cake of Maryland. Mr. Fitzgerald taught us how to pick crabs, which was great, while also telling us stories from around the island. Now, how much of those stories are true, I can't say, but it was a great way to learn about the history of the island, which is always one of my favorite parts of the trip. Just sitting and talking to the people that live there is always an eye-opening experience. They're some of the happiest, most grateful and generous people I have ever met. Thank you again for the opportunity to go to Smith Island. The memories we made there will never be forgotten.
As a token of our gratitude, we have some Gators masks that have Turner Ashby FFA's emblem on there for each of the school board members that I will hand out while Diana talks again.
And we really just wanted to show our gratitude to you all. This was such an amazing trip for us to be able to go on one final time and we just really want to show you our gratitude and thank you all so much. We are super grateful.
Don't go anywhere yet. You guys can stay up front for a second, please. So the mask I'm wearing is not an FFA mask, as you may recognize, but it's the winning design from our mask competition at the elementary level, but the one I took off in order to put it on for the meeting was an FFA mask. So I appreciate the Gator and so, and on behalf- So, I appreciate the Gator and so, and on behalf of the school board, I also want to point out that, you know, this is one of those field trips where there's never really a question whether or not to approve it, as long as it meets, you know, the legal requirements. We were allowed to send students. And it's very different from some of the other information that I got. You know, I had a text message from Mr. Fitzgerald saying, you know, here we are on the boat on the way over. Most of the other messages I got during spring break were, look how awesome it is at Disney World. And these students and educators decided to do something different. And it's what we often refer to as moral purpose. You know, we aren't just here to do things better for Rockingham County. Obviously, this is our school division. But that's a connection, you know, with the Bay and with people elsewhere where our students do a service project to help people in a very different community. You know, Smith Island, like you said, is so different. And as we always talk about, you know, in terms of citizenship, you know, being there for others and having a purpose that goes beyond ourselves. That's obviously very evident in all you do at FFA. And it is all about service. It's learning by doing things. It is serving others and being leaders in that area. And so, it's my pleasure to award to all of you a certificate of commendation for exemplary citizenship by public schools on behalf of the school board. And I will begin with Mr. Fitzgerald. Congratulations, Eric. Good. Mr. Krikenberger. It wasn't their first trip to Smith Island, right? And this is an annual event that unfortunately couldn't happen last year. But again, educators giving up their spring break to help others in a different state. And so, just so proud of, you know, how it was approached. Hey, can we please, please, please do this? And it just took a couple of seconds to say, of course you can, as long as it's, you know, as long as everything's in place. And they had everything ready. So, just awesome. And again, it just goes along with some of the other things you've done already this year. I visited them at RA when they were doing some things and also at the school. And so, always leading by example and always being there for others. Lauren Satterwhite, thank you again for everything you do in FFA and, you know, with the families on Smith Island and for them. Diana. Slagel. Josh Payne. Thank you. Congratulations. And Lauren Wilburn. Thanks so much to all of you again. And you guys might want to just stick around for a picture that I'm going to take for my FFA gallery.
Thank you. I just realized that I think this is the first time in 14 months that we have had this many students join us for a Rockingham County School Board meeting. Those of you that pretty much attend every meeting know about this time of year, we start to see a lot of seniors join us as they try to meet everything that they need for their government class. But it's been a good 14 months and it certainly is refreshing to see all of you here with us and be engaged and being part of the process of the school board. So, thank you all for being here. I think next up is Rockingham Educational Foundation. Ms. Shomo, Ms. Lepira?
Okay, I decided I wanted to see everyone. The Rockingham Education Foundation, along with everyone else in this room, over the past year, we've had to adapt, to overcome, okay? And continue with our mission. And that is the mission of supporting teachers and students in Rockingham County schools. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Katie here. She's our Executive Director, who recently received her certification from the National School Foundation Association as an educational foundation leader. We're very proud of her work. And so, I'll turn over to her for a little bit about what we have been doing.
All right. Thank you for having us this evening. It's very exciting to be able to be with everyone in person and seeing the work that we've done kind of pay off throughout the year. And like Ms. Shomo mentioned, we've had to adapt some of our programming for this year to go with the flow of, you know, students not being in the classroom, supporting our teachers and how they need, finding out what the school division needs from REFIE. And really, we like to consider us the bridge between the community and the school system. And so, we adapted this phrase, just kind of stronger together, which you've probably seen it a lot of, but we think about the families, the communities, the students, and teachers, and we're all stronger together. Just want to do a little brief overview of what we've been up to this year. We have five core programs and they're going to kind of come out here through with this presentation. Starting with early literacy, we donated 800 books to all incoming kindergarteners. This year was called Kindergarten Here I Come. We send a letter home with parents, you know, hoping that they will read with their kids, you know, before school starts to get them ready for kindergarten and to kind of start that love of learning to read. And we have an employee giving campaign. So, these are 210 Rockingham County school employees donate through their monthly contributions, which means that $1,240 comes back to REFIE every month, which is very valuable for us. We were unable to do the regular Stuff the Bus this year, but we did do a virtual Stuff the Bus. And during that, we raised $12,500 and that we were able to divide and send out to the schools to be able to spend money on school supplies that they needed for their classrooms of the underserved students. We also used funding to stock our own depot. So, we spent about $12,000 to purchase new supplies, markers, crayons, you know, dry erase markers. For those who are not familiar, we are open weekly for the teachers to come in and shop for free from our depot to be able to have stuff for their classrooms that we rely on donated supplies like this, furniture from businesses, things that people have donated from their craft closets. So, we're really happy for that. One of the other things that we did is we partnered with the Green Valley Book Fair and we were able to raise about $1,000. And then, through Monica's gift, we were able to spend another $1,000 to have high-quality titles go out to students so that they could take home books. So, that was, that was nice. The other big thing of what we did this year was we received $20,000 from the Rockingham County Cares Fund in partnership with the Community Foundation to offer what we called Yes Cards. These allowed for educators to work with their families, work with REFIE, and for us to be able to give back to those families by way of gift cards. This was able to help provide, you know, extra food or new clothes or things that would, that just kind of helped go a little bit further for that family. And we were able to use all $20,000. It was very, very rewarding for us and I believe the community as well. We just recently awarded $24,000 in spring grants for Innovative Learning Grants. And altogether, this was awarded out to 27 different educators. Our Innovative Learning Grants challenged the teachers to think creatively of how to engage their learner and, you know, providing funding for field trips or speakers to come in, different things like that. So, our fundraising has certainly looked different this year. So, where we're normally having a big gala or an auction fundraiser, we've had to kind of do things a little bit different this year. We have, we did do an online trivia, so Are You Smarter Than a 5th Grader? That turned out to be a lot of fun for the evening if you were able to attend. We did have our annual golf tournament, the 26th Annual Golf Tournament, a couple of weeks ago. We participated in the Great Community Give and we did, we were able to raise nearly $10,000 for that and that was incredible. And then, our next thing that we have is Pick Your Getaway Online Raffle, which will be May 14th. And all those details can be found at refiegivesback.org. So, overall, our fundraising efforts brought in about $35,000. And so, we're hoping to bring in a little bit more money because that those funds are what helps us be able to award our Innovative Learning Grants. So, we just finished up wrapping up our REFIE scholarships. We had 149 applications. I had the pleasure of being able to interview nearly 100 students. And I recognized some of the names that were mentioned earlier of people who will be receiving REFIE scholarships. I would just, that is one of the joys of my year, to be able to see these students and what they've accomplished and what these high schoolers are doing. I'm going to hand it back to Suzy so she can announce our Teachers of the Year.
She's got to push the button. It is my greatest honor, having been a teacher in Rockingham County schools for over 20 years. I call it in my previous life. And I'm on year 37, finishing up year 37 this year. I know what teachers have to go through. I know what they need, lots of things. And so, my passion has been to work with, on the REFIE board to help support teachers. What an honor to announce the Teachers of the Year for 2022 this evening. And we're just going to show their pictures and announce their names. The Lucy Sims Educator of the Year Award will be forthcoming in the next couple of weeks from this pool of outstanding teachers. Very happy, I'll tell you. Kelly Sprague, Cub Run Elementary School. Bobby Joe Kite, Elkton Elementary School. Michelle Huggard, Folks Run Elementary School. Carleen Lance, Lacy Spring Elementary School. Crystal Jordan, Lynnville Edum Elementary School. Brooke McKenzie, McGaquesville Elementary School. Stephanie Nicely, Mountain View Elementary School. James Cricks, John C. Myers Elementary School. Dawn Flora, Audubon Elementary School. Mary Harder, Peak View Elementary. Holly Belice, Plains Elementary School. Avonlea Howard, Pleasant Valley Elementary School. Margaret Alger, Riverbend Elementary School. Kelly Cadel, South River Elementary. And Melanie Bear, John Wayland Elementary. For the middle schools, Elkton Middle School, Tracy Matthews. J. Frank Hilliard, Benjamin Bowman. Montevideo Middle School, Madison Allen. Wilbur Pence Middle School, Amanda Wilson. For the high schools, Yates Hall, Broadway High School. Lee Stover, East Rockingham High School. I taught Lee in my former life and in my current life as he became, became an outstanding teacher. I'm so proud of him. Rachel Jenner, Massanutten Technical Center. Janie Timms, Spotswood High School. And Cecile Deason, Turner Ashby High School. So, let's have a round of applause for these persons. Some of these folks are here. Some of them are perhaps streaming. But we congratulate all of them and there's more to come. Thank you all very much for allowing us to speak today. Thanks.
Thank you Katie and Suzy for sharing your evening with us and taking the time. We appreciate your partnership and collaboration with the school system and your support. Even in these difficult times this year, you were still able to provide the support that was needed for our staff and teachers and students. So, we appreciate that. And I think it's a great segue into our Inspire Awards, since you also support that program and some of the awards that we give associated with that. So, thank you. So, we'll move into Inspire Awards. And the first presentation is to Bobby Joe Kite, who I think his name we heard already. And presenting to her will be Barbara Palmer, Mariah Maurer, and Alice, let me see. I think that's it, right? Okay. Okay.
Okay, so you'll have to bear with me. I'm usually in a room with four and five-year-olds, not adults. So, just bear with me. So, I nominated Ms. Kite on behalf of my son Connor. And what I wrote was, she is so kind and caring. My son has a rare genetic skin disease called ichthyosis. And she sat down and took notes that, so that she could be prepared for him when he arrived in her classroom. Not everybody does that. She makes him feel welcomed and just like he's one of the normal kids. Doesn't point him out or make him feel like he's different. And without a teacher like her, he wouldn't want to go to school. I don't have to fight him to get up to go to school. He actually wants to go. And when there was snow days, he got mad because he couldn't go to school. So, yeah, so we are very happy to give this award to her.
Ms. Kite was one of the Teachers of the Year. She's also been nominated by some other students that couldn't be with us tonight. Allison Morris and her brother Jeremiah Morris. Allison said, I'm reading what they said, she's very nice. She was good at everything. She was an amazing teacher. She read amazing books. She was very patient, very enthusiastic about everything. That's so true. Jeremiah said, she gave us options of what we could do instead of forcing us to do what we didn't want to do. That's definitely Teacher of the Year. She made me a better reader and never gave up on me. She gave us multiple books that we could read. She was very patient. She never lost her cool. She made reading exciting by reading books in cool voices. Very kind to everyone. She taught me switch gears. I'm not familiar with that. It's a math term. And she made me want to learn. Isn't that what we all want our children to do at school? Well done, Ms. Kite. All right, next one?
So, the next one is for Katie Walker, presenting to Katie Walker. And are you doing that, Barbara also?
Yes, I don't. Is Kingston here? Kingston, please?
Nope.
Well, Mrs. Walker, Ms. Walker is kindergarten teacher. Amazing. She's been very wonderful this year with all the changes in kindergarten. This is what Kingston wrote about you. She never see, I think Kingston had some help from his mother. Okay, which is great. She never seems to let all the chaos in the world, as we currently know it, throw her any curveballs, throw her off balance, or stop her from building meaningful and mindful relationships with her students. I genuinely feel she cares and is 100% invested in their lives for the long haul. She's not just a teacher, she's an educator. Her investment in her students makes- Her investment in her students makes you know that she makes a difference." That was written by the Plumes. Well done, Katie Walker. Well done. Thank you.
And so, I think our final award to Elkton Elementary Teacher is to Pat Fells, and it's Misty Snyder.
Abigail had to be cheerleading, so her mom's gonna present the award.
Yes, unfortunately, she had to, she had a mandatory practice tonight. Abby is going to Disney World this week to compete. So, I wrote this on behalf of my daughter, Abigail. "There is no teacher more deserving of this award for my daughter. The bond she has developed with Mr. Fells has grown into a friendship that she will carry for her lifetime. She's now in fifth grade, but when Abby started kindergarten, she would cry on gym days because she was so shy and uncomfortable leaving the classroom and going to a new space with a new teacher. Mr. Fells allowed her time and space to get to know him and the PE activities. I'm happy to say that PE is now one of her favorite times of the school week. Outside of gym, Mr. Fells and Abby have developed a friendship that allows her to be her funny self and to overcome her shyness. I just want to say thank you for being so kind and really making that connection with all the students. It's really made a difference with Abigail, and she is, she gets emotional thinking about going to middle school without having Mr. Fells there with her."
Thank you. Well done.
We'll get, we'll get a picture tomorrow. Yes, please.
Thank you to you three teachers for all you do for the students at Elkton Elementary. Connor, thanks for being here tonight. You're welcome. And thanks to our parents for sharing those thoughts on behalf of their students, we appreciate it. The next award is to Kate McDonald, sorry, Kate. And it is Kirsten Hindle, who's presenting.
Tonight, I would be presenting this award to Kate McDonald, and it is the Inspire Award. Ms. Mack has never been an ordinary teacher, and if she had been, I probably wouldn't be reading this today. What makes her so inspiring is that while teaching her students, she also cares for them. Instead of only teaching curriculum, she also teaches kindness sympathy. Last year was a hard year, and I had some up and down days, and sometimes I would walk into her class in a down mood. But rather than barking me with questions when I seemed already flustered during class, she asked if I was okay or offered me a seat in the back so I could be farther from the bustling commotion of a high school Spanish class. Though I had a few bad days, it was a lot less than it could have been if I hadn't had her as my teacher. So, I'm presenting this award to Ms. Mack today because Ms. Mack inspires me every day to be positive and help others who might be having a rough day, and to overall be the light when everything else in the world feels dark.
Ms. McDonald, thank you for all that you do for the students at East Rock, we appreciate it. Kirsten, thanks for being with us this evening and sharing your thoughts and praise of Ms. McDonald. Next, I think Mr. Baylor, you have an award to present to Mike Davis.
So, when I talked to Mike and Jim a little earlier tonight, we said it's the Alpha and Omega of East Rockingham Staff. Mike and I have been working together since 1991. That's 30 years, we go back. And we have a mutual interest in studying our genealogy, so we talk a lot about our ancestors that did things in the Shandau Valley. Mike's presenter is Wyatt Baker. And Wyatt has a good excuse for not being here tonight, he's actually playing baseball. He's at Lou Ray, and we're winning 11 to 7. So, Wyatt, Wyatt's doing well tonight. But Wyatt nominated Mr. Davis, his CTE teacher, his business teacher, probably what, sports marketing? Probably. And he says, "Mr. Davis is one of the best teachers in East Rock I've ever seen," period. "I've never seen or heard him yell at anyone, and he is one of the nicest people you'd ever meet." So, tonight, patience is a virtue across all levels. Mr. Davis, thank you very much for all you do.
Mr. Davis, congratulations, thank you for all you do, we appreciate it. Mr. Baylor, if you would thank Mr. Wyatt for us, for sharing those thoughts, I'd appreciate it.
Yes ma'am, I will.
Okay, I think you have one more.
Yes, the next, and the next, I think, and the last teacher for Inspire Awards tonight's, Mr. Jim Beechey. I haven't known Jim quite as long. We hired Jim at the semester mark to teach science here at East Rockingham, so I've known, I've known Mr. Davis 31 years, I've known Mr. Beechey 31 days. But I can tell you, in those 31 days, when I go by and I peek my head in the door, I always learn some science. So, the last time I stopped by, I gotta tell you guys, so Jim is in front of this computer, right? And he's teaching a total HLA class. And I mean, he is up, standing up, talking to them as if they were live right there. So, appreciate Jim's effort. Jim was nominated by Lauren Loker, he was an HLA student, a Home Learning Academy student. And Lauren says about Mr. Beechey, "He is a great teacher, he always makes me laugh, but still stays on task." He is a really good teacher. Okay? So, Mr. Beechey, thank you for all you do as well.
Thank you, Mr. Beechey. I remember the difference you made in a certain redheaded child's life that I know very well, so thank you for all you've done in your service to Rockingham County Schools, I appreciate it. We appreciate it. Mr. Baylor, thanks. Please send our thanks to Lauren also. Okay, that's our Inspire Awards for this evening. We'll move on to public comments. We have one person signed up for public comments this evening, Amber Hamm.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to talk tonight. As you guys are aware, I'm a parent of three children that attend Rockingham County Public Schools. One's in elementary, middle, and high, and then a four-year-old. I have been part of Rockingham County Schools as a parent for nine years and plan to be part of Rockingham County Schools for another 13. Two of my children have IEPs due to disabilities, and my other children go in and out of, my other child goes in and out of reading services at the elementary school. As a parent, I see struggles and frustrations that my children have to endure as they try to overcome and deal with the limitations that they have been given. These limitations are not something they chose, but it's a lifelong battle that they will encounter 100% of the rest of their life. As a parent, I have seen the services offered to special education students and kids that struggle with learning diminished as they progress to the different levels of school. As my daughter moved to middle school, she regressed significantly in reading. I heard the comments from school personnel, "Like, we do not offer that. She is going to get what she needs in her normal English class. We do not have a staff, we only have one reading specialist in school. We cannot write reading specialist services in her IEP, etc." I allowed her to go through her sixth-grade year with services being diminished and not receiving the level of service that she received in elementary school. However, she has still attended summer school. When she was tested in the fall of her seventh-grade year, her reading score tested below what she was at the end of her fifth-grade year, when she still, when she exited elementary school. As a result, I advocated for services that were not normally offered. She took her normal English class throughout the year. She took a second reading class entitled developmental reading instead of an elective. She received direct reading supports of 120 minutes every two weeks. She was pulled into her small groups at the end of her English class for additional support, and she worked with a reading specialist once or twice a week. We then saw improvements in her reading. As she entered high school, the regression of services continued. My daughter received the direct support services. However, she did not receive the level of small groups at the end of her English class. She was denied the opportunity to take developmental reading. Her English class was only falling in the fall semester instead of year-long. She was not receiving services from reading specialists because there's none in high school. And now, I find out there's no plan for summer school at the high school level. Do you see the regression of services that have occurred as a result of my child being promoted to high school? You might want to blame this on COVID, but this is not the result of COVID. RCPS does not offer reading specialist services in the high school. When I asked the school to consider having the reading specialist come over from the elementary school, I was told that they do not have any time to provide their services. As a parent of a child that receives special, or reading specialist services in elementary school, I know this is true. In fact, in this situation, there's not enough of reading specialist services in elementary school. This is another example of not having enough resources and staff in the schools for your core subjects like reading. However, this is not a decision that needs to be changed, but however, this is a decision that needs to be changed at the district level. RCPS not providing summer school to high school students to help prevent the summer slide is a practice that has occurred for several years, not because of COVID. Just because a student is promoted to the next level of education does not mean that they miraculously do not need these services. I have heard the comments those services are included in the normal classes. Where not every student needs those level of services, and not all services students need are in those classes. I have heard that it's not offered in high school. Well, if that, well, if it's a need, why not? Just because that is what we have done in the past does not mean that it should not, should continue. If that was the case, education would not improve. Is that what RCPS wants? In talking and listening to the school board and Dr. Schuckel, that is not the direction that RCPS is heading or stands behind. RCPS strives to improve the education for students. So, why is the district reducing services as students are promoted and not giving the needed resources and staff to schools? There are core subjects like reading and math where students are not excelling. Some students need more than what is typically offered in a normal classroom. Summer school helps provide those resources to students. When asking about summer school for the high school students, I was recently told by district administrative, "I will speak with our team to determine if remediation, summer school program would be the best use of our time and resources." Reading, math, and basic social skills are essential life skills. I have sat through enough board meetings to know that if non-essential academics were cut, that RCPS would have the funds and resources needed for services like reading specialist, more behavior specialist, summer school. If a district has to choose between the schools providing the students with the opportunities to achieve grade-level performance or excel in extracurricular activity, I believe, I believe that should be an easy decision if the district truly values the student's academic success. Parents should not have to advocate for these opportunities to be provided to students that struggle. It is not the student's fault that they have a disability, it is not the hardship that they choose. When we are talking about giving special education students the opportunity to maintain or increase the skill that they have struggled all year long to accomplish, how can summer school not be the best use of RCPS's time and resources for those students? If RCPS fails to recognize these needs for their students and make changes, then Rockingham County Public Schools has, have done a disservice to these students. There is still time to offer summer school to high school students. However, these students are relying on the district's ability to recognize the need and make the commitment to make a change. There will be a meeting on Wednesday in which high school principals will have the ability to give the input as a decision is made. I asked the school board members to advocate for this change to be effective for the summer of 2021 and support the students that are less fortunate. Furthermore, I ask that the district and school board look into services diminishing as students progress through the school and providing funding for those services to continue throughout the students' graduation of high school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm, we appreciate it. We have no other public comment speakers at this time, is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Okay. Seeing none, we will move into highlights by board members. Mr. Falk? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Ms. Lor?
Thank you. I was gonna pass when I walked in the door. I was kinda on my way here, kinda grumpy, tired of COVID, and just thinking about a year that has not been what we all wanted. And then, to sit here tonight in this wonderful building, thank you for hosting us tonight, seeing these amazing students that have left, but I got so much energy from them while they were here. And the, to hear the report from the FFA, I remembered, hey, I did have a highlight. I was able to work with the FFA last week and proctor the poultry judging contest. So, things are starting to get back to normal. It was on video, and it was different than it used to be, but things were better. We didn't have to stand down in the freezing cold for a contest, so, and, and things didn't change over the contest because it was all photographed. So, there are still things that we can find that are good. And then, I heard the presentation by Riffy, and I wanted to thank them, although I think they've left to, thank them for their support of projects like the field trip to the bay. And I thought about how, as a farmer, those trips are so important because they help you realize that what you do here, and I don't know about you all, but I am fertilizing the daylights out of my lawn right now, which I shouldn't be doing. That's bad for, bad for the bay, because the things we do here affect that, and it's really hard to learn that until you go to the bay and talk to the people. So, that was such a, a good trip for, for those kids. And then, also, I remembered that Riffy gave out scholarships and awarded the scholarships. They moved up the timetable because they knew that some kids needed to know if they were gonna get a scholarship. So, because that made the decision for them to go to college. And just thinking about these things, definitely, and all the Inspire Awards, I've been inspired tonight, and I hope everyone else has as well, and that's definitely a highlight for me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I'm sorry that the Riffy people aren't here because the highlight for me was the Great Community Give that took place on Wednesday, April 21st. And the nonprofits were receiving a total of $1.7 million. I mean, that is quite an accomplishment. And Riffy is going to receive $10,000, which I think is grand. But I would like to thank all of those who supported Riffy. I noticed that there were many teachers and staff members who supported Riffy in the Great Community Give, and I would like to say thank you. Thank you very much for the support.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Breeden?
I have no comment this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. Scharkel?
A lot of the highlights that I was going to talk about then ended up being recognized in front of us here. The email that East Rock got, you know, on Sunday, Mr. Baylor forwarded it to me, and it's just, it's not even surprising anymore, you know, how amazing our kids are. And like I, you know, I've said 100 times now, you know, those who complain about this generation haven't met our students, because I see it on a daily basis, right? What, what our students are able to do. We have, you know, debate state competitions. We have, you know, debate state competitions, finalists and winners in our schools. East Rock placed third at states in debates and also had a state winner in one of the competitions. Spotswood placed second, and one of the girls that, a senior, placed first in the state and in her area. And so the students are really doing an amazing job all over the place. This Thursday will be the first game, I believe, ever in the history of Rockham County schools where softball game is played under the lights to put the girls on equal footing with baseball. So that's going to be an enormous highlight for me. And I know that there are other games that, that, that will be played under the lights. I'm really looking forward to that. But then, of all those things, really, I can't forget about my visit to Cabron. So when we talk about the services we provide to students, as you know, we're always seven, eight million dollars short of what our administrators bring to us in terms of requests. That first budget is always, you know, the first budget request, who I'm a mass outlines all the requests, sometimes is in the $10 million more range. And we have to make some tough decisions and, but we still provide services to students that are just amazing. And the tiered systems of support initiative that's led by Becky Hill Schifflett and that was started really by staff, by our board certified behavior analysts. Part of this is always about finding out how it works. And so some of the students with severe traumatic backgrounds, students with emotional issues that are always operating in fight or flight mode when they come to school, now have additional services available too because of what we learned through the pandemic. And I had a chance to visit at Cabron and spend an hour with a student who, whenever he can't function in the classroom, rather than, you know, labeling the student and trying to have that student, like we sometimes are asked, you know, some, to remove that student from the classroom for good, and they provide services where that student can come to another room and then still be part of the class by watching a Zoom session, and then there are intensive services available. So there are so many choices we make in terms of where we can place the resources we have, and, and we, you know, place them in some of these areas. And after that hour, he just said, you know, you're coming back tomorrow, right? And it's just, you know, being with adults that care, that they really haven't seen in many cases over the course of a year, you can really see what our educators provide. And, and we wish, you know, in that area as well, you know, we've, we've added mental behavioral health staff, and it's an amazing project. And that was just one of the opportunities that I, I said afterwards, you know, this was, came out of a conversation with the BCBA, who had originally, you know, brought the presentation to executive, and I said, I'll never forget it. You know, what, how many students didn't have these opportunities five, six, seven, eight years ago? And because of staff bringing that to our attention, and because of people like Becky working on that, and the board making sure that that's a priority, students who didn't have opportunities before because we just waited until, you know, they couldn't handle it anymore, and then we had no other options for them. Now they have options in the building, they're integrated minutes at a time into the classroom, and hopefully we can counteract some of the trauma they've experienced. So there is a lot of good work going on, and that was absolutely not only a highlight of the week, but that visit was a career highlight in all my years of teaching and, and working at Central Office as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schekel. I have a couple of things. First of all, musical season is somewhat upon us. It's kind of been a staggered season this year, and so I was fortunate yesterday to be able to see the Spotswood musical, and it was, it's, it's amazing how our students are working so hard to succeed right now. Just amazing. It's not just about football, it's not about basketball, it's about everything. It's debate, it's the musical, it's the arts. And they are, they're doing their work, their schoolwork, their academic work, and they're doing all of these other things on top of it. And so it was a pleasure to be able to see them do a live performance yesterday as a result of some lobbying on our part to increase numbers for fine arts performances. And to kind of dovetail with that, we were, Dr. McQuilkin and I and Dr. Schekel, the First Lady of Virginia was here last week and went to Mountain View, and the teachers and staff and students there just hit it out of the park in the visit. The Secretary of Education for Virginia was there and the Assistant Secretary, and it allowed us to, an opportunity to advocate for needs that are specific to Rockingham County. We're not Richmond, we're not Arlington, we're not Henrico, but to actually put the bug in an ear of an educator, a longtime educator, as the First Lady is, about some specific needs and thoughts. So that was an incredible opportunity for us to have, and kudos to Mountain View. Finally, I have one last statement that I wanted to make, and hopefully I can get through it by the time we get done tonight. Over the past few weeks, I've spent a great deal of time reflecting on my school board service, and I feel incredibly fortunate to have been entrusted by the people of Election District III to represent them for the past seven years. Tonight that I am announcing that I've made the decision to not seek another term. This decision was not easy because doing this work has truly been an honor, and there are still many things to do. However, the time and energy required to run a campaign and serve on this board is substantial, and I want to be able to focus my energy for the next eight months on supporting our school community as we move forward from the challenges of the past year and helping identify a new path toward the what's next for Rockingham County schools. Blood is, plus, it is time for me to devote more time to my family. During my time on the board, I have been impressed with the commitment of our administrative leadership and my fellow board members in looking for innovative ways to support the needs of all students. RCPS is well governed, and we are blessed to have stakeholders who value and support education. It is this commitment and support that makes us one of the best school systems in Virginia. Each of the board members contributes a unique perspective to our work, values each other's opinions, and works very hard to make the best decisions possible to serve all of our students in a nonpartisan way. It is not possible to please every community member with every decision, and this is particularly true in an election district such as mine, where students residing in the district funnel to all four at school attendance areas. It is my hope that the voters of District III will support someone who brings a new perspective with a thoughtful collaborative approach that considers the needs of all children in our county to the board. I want to thank all of the people who have provided me with support, guidance, help, and even criticism as I've done my work. It has helped me to be a better board member and meant a lot to me. And so with that, we're gonna continue on for today, tomorrow, and the next eight months. Thank you. From there, we'll move into action items, and board members, we have reason, or we have to approve the minutes for last meeting. So do we have a motion for approval?
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any question or discussion regarding the minutes for April 12th? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Fitzgerald, right? You're doing CTE?
Chair Reed, board members, and Dr. Schekel. Before I do my Perkins, or ask for action on my Perkins Plan, I feel compelled to say something tonight. This afternoon, or this evening, I guess, when we got here, I was really amazed at the quality of students that we've had and the quality of the teachers. And as I watched the teachers up here, every time a student's name was mentioned, I saw a sparkle in teachers' eyes. That doesn't happen everywhere, and I want you to know that, and I think there's a reason for that. I'm gonna just say a word and just, I gotta, I feel compelled tonight. Back in 2000 to 2002, I had a chance to visit 108 different schools. I was selected as a curriculum specialist for Virginia Tech. I worked with schools all the way from Arlington down to Lee County, everything north of 29. I visited schools in every single one of those counties, 108 of them. In two years, traveled 60,000 miles. I saw a lot of different school systems. I came back here after those two years. Dr. Kidd had granted me a sabbatical and a professional leave for those two years. I came back to Rockham County, and the first thing I saw, or first person I saw was Delmar Bakken, and I told him, Mr. Bakken, you never have realized what kind of system we have in Rockingham County. It's consistent, no matter who the superintendent is or who the board members are, we always have a good system. And I feel supported. That's why I've been in the system for 37 years, and I appreciate all the work you do. And Ms. Reed, I hear you with what you're saying. I appreciate your service, and I really appreciate all of you guys' service. So if you get down about what you're doing, don't, because what you're doing is you're running the best school division in the state of Virginia, and I mean that too. With that, during the April 12th meeting, I presented the 2021-2022 Perkins Five Local Plan for your information. Tonight, I asked for approval of that plan so that I can submit it to the Virginia Department of Education. That plan has been approved already by the Joint Advisory Committee, the Blue Ridge Community College Representatives, and it also meets all assurances that are required by federal legislation. So for tonight, I ask for your action on that item. And before you do that, do you have any questions about the Perkins Plan?
Board members, do you have any questions? Okay. Do you have a motion?
I recommend approval of the plan as presented.
I just knew what you were gonna say. I knew what you were gonna say, Dr. Schekel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the CTE Local Perkins Plan for 2021-2022. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the approval of the CTE Plan.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or discussion, boards members? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Appreciate it. Next is AP Biology textbook, Ms. Stone?
Chairman Reed, board members, Dr. Schekel. I'm bringing action to the board to request the formation of the AP Biology Textbook Committee. The AP Biology textbook does not meet the new AP test changes, and we have a committee member from each of the four high schools as well as a parent and a student. So I'm requesting approval of the committee to select a book.
I recommend approval of the committee as presented by Ms. Stone. When was the last time the AP textbook was approved? Do you know?
It is six years old, and you're supposed to renew them every five years as well.
All right. Thank you. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the AP Biology textbook adoption committee. Do you have a motion for approval?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent for the AP Biology Textbook Adoption Committee.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any other questions or discussion, board members? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Mr. Perkins, gosh, you slid over there to hear without even seeing you. Okay.
Chair Reed, board members, Dr. Schekel. The invitation for bid for smart interactive panel installation at 10 of our elementary schools and four of our middle schools was issued on March 25th. Before you are responses from responsible and responsive bidders. Just one note, the bid document previously posted online, I replaced just before the meeting to reflect the correct amounts for the two highest bidders, just simply transpose those values to be correct. The recommendation is to award the contract to Computer Cabling and Telephone Services for $67,720.
I recommend approval of the bid for the smart interactive panel installation as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Schekel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the bid for the smart interactive panels. Do we have a motion to approve computer cabling and telephone services?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any other questions or discussion, board members?
So there's quite a discrepancy, Mr. Perkins. Do you have some idea?
There is. After, followed up, you know, with conversation with the low bidder, and after talking with them, we're confident that they can provide the resources needed to complete that project in a specified timeline, and they've done a good amount of work for us in the past well. So we're comfortable with that, both the vendor and the bid.
And this is for just the cabling and the installation process, not the actual 580 boards themselves?
That's correct. That's correct. This is just for the installation, the labor itself.
It still seems like a pretty good deal, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Hand?
Chair Reed, school board members, and Dr. Schekel. This evening, I am here to request an approval of the application for special education funding for the flow-through dollars, the federal flow-through dollars. I came to you about a month ago with information, and I have, in the meantime, taken this document to the Special Education Advisory Committee, and they did provide approval at their last meeting. So I'm ready now to return to you for your approval, and then I'll pass it on to Dr. Schekel.
I do recommend approval of the Special Education Annual Plan for 2021-2022 as presented by Mr. Hand and as approved already by the Special Education Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schekel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the Special Education Annual Plan for 2021-2022. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the Special Education Plan Summary as presented by Mr. Hand.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Chair will second. Do we have any other questions or discussion? Please vote.
Just to be clear, we're approving the plan, not just the executive summary, right? Just for purposes of the motion, yeah?
I'm sorry.
We're approving the plan, not just the summary of it.
Okay. We're good, Ms. McQuilkin? Okay. Seeing no other questions or discussion, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Hand, I have one quick question for you before I let you go. Are you, how are you doing? I know we've talked before about your Special Ed Advisory Committee, that sometimes you've had some difficulty finding some parents to be, or community members to be part of that committee. Are you still gonna?
Actually, due to the efforts of Mrs. Hamm, who spoke earlier this evening, we are doing pretty well with the parent representation.
Good.
And I do applaud Mrs. Hamm. I don't know if she's still here or not. She may have left. I appreciate her efforts, and I, we have, you know, a rather large group from the Turner Ashby area. We hope to expand that to the other three districts in the county, but we are definitely picking up business.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Hand.
Sure.
Okay. Information items are next. Okay, information items are next. Ms. Hill Schiflett.
Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Seichel. Next month, May two thousand and twenty-one, is National Mental Health Month. And I'm sure you're aware that this topic is of growing concern and of importance. We know that many of our students are impacted negatively by unmet mental health needs. But we also know that taking care of ourselves is vital to taking care of others. Mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. Mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. All individuals face challenges in life that may impact their mental health. The pandemic has had a significant impact on mental health and wellness. Isolation, loneliness, and loss have contributed to an increase in the number of adults, adolescents, and children reporting anxiety, depression, and suicidal ideation. Awareness and prevention can effectively reduce the stigma and the burden of mental health conditions. That's why Rockingham County Public Schools will recognize May two thousand and twenty-one as Mental Health Awareness Month. Each school will participate in awareness activities throughout the month with our students and our staff. Our hope is that everyone in our schools and in our community will commit to recognizing the importance of mental health and wellness. This year, our slogan is "Be Kind to Your Mind: Care, Connect, Thrive." We want everyone to care about the importance of mental health and reduce the stigma that can be associated. And we want everyone to connect with people, strategies, and resources that will help them be well and thrive. You have a little green gift bag there at your place, and each item in that bag will hopefully help you support our efforts. I'll tell you what they are. There's a Snickers bar. Your mental health is nothing to snicker at. There's a rubber ball. You can be resilient and bounce back from life's challenges. There's a Bio Dot card. That card can help you manage your stress by touching a round dot and give you suggested strategies to manage it. You'll find a card with a QR code on it. This code will direct, take you directly to the Rockingham County Public Schools Mental Health Toolkit. This site is located on the Rockingham County website and was created early in the year, in the fall, to help our staff deal with the stress of returning to school in a pandemic. And I'd like to thank Dr. Helbert, Meg Helbert, because she actually got that website up and going for us, and we continue to add and change. This site provides a wealth of information and strategies and resources. And lastly, you'll find a green ribbon. We hope that you'll wear it during the month of May to promote mental health awareness. I want to close with just a few quotes from Fred Rogers. He's one of my favorites. "Some days, doing the best we can may still fall short of what we'd like to be able to do, but life isn't perfect on any front, and doing what we can with what we have is the most we should expect of ourselves and anyone else. All of us, at some point or another, need help, whether we're giving or receiving help. Each one of us has something valuable to bring to this world. That's one of the things that connects us as neighbors. And as human beings, our job in life is to help people realize how rare and valuable each one of us really is, that each of us has something that no one else has or ever will have, something inside that is unique all the time. It's our job to encourage each other, to discover that uniqueness, and to provide ways of developing its expression." I want to thank you all, each personally and as a board, for your continued support of our behavior and mental health programs in Rockingham County, and I appreciate your comments, Dr. Seichel, about seeing it in action. Right now, I'd like for Eric Fitzgerald to introduce some school counselors that we have with us this evening, who are going to talk with you about the role that they play in our mental health and wellness for our students across the division.
Thanks, Becky. Tonight, we're fortunate to have with us four of our finest school counselors, or maybe I should say rock stars, definitely rock stars, to talk a little bit about how they're responding to the needs in our schools and community, especially in the area of mental health. This past year, as you are well aware, counselors have shouldered a very heavy load, working with our students remotely and in person to be sure that students still succeed. To tell us more about what has been happening in the world of counseling, school counseling, tonight we have with us, and if you guys will come on up, we have Tamara Kratz from Cub Run, we have John Helbert from J. Frank Hilliard, and Dr. Meg Helbert from Wilbur Pitts, and Michelle Campbell from East Rockingham High School. And Tamara, I'm gonna turn it over to you, because I think you're gonna start out. And again, these guys are all rock stars. I can't tell, all of our counselors are rock stars, but these guys are like the lead singers in the rock star group, so here you go, Tamara.
Good evening, Chair Reed, members of the school board, and Dr. Seichel. It really helps to be rock stars when you've got fabulous leaders like Becky Hill Schiflett and Eric Fitzgerald. I want to thank you for your time this evening, as we share with you about the role of school counselors in our Rockingham County Public Schools today, and the impact that we make in the lives of our students, our families, and our community as a whole. As school counselors, we recognize the privilege we have to be entrusted with an individual's story, and we are honored when a small connection with a student or a family member leads them to trust us enough to share difficult things while welcoming us into their story to bring hope, resilience, and connection. Throughout this presentation, we aim to provide you with a glimpse at the current needs of our students. While you listen to the many ways school counselors are meeting these needs, our hope is that you will gain additional insight into the complexity and hard work of the school counselor. And we're gonna take turns sharing about what we do. And as I pass this mic on, I'm going to add one more thing to your toolkit, often what's elementary school counselors use, and that is Stone's.
So some of the things that Ms. Hill Schiflett was already discussing, the, we are seeing increased struggles in our students. So the ratio in two thousand and sixteen, one in six children and adolescents was diagnosed, oh, thank you, quicker, diagnosed with a mental health disorder, and that now is closer to two in six or one out of three. We're seeing school being done in a different way to try to meet those needs. And in classrooms, I see teachers talking more about mental health and doing things to help increase awareness and having additional supports. But I think that we're seeing now just how important it is to treat students holistically and how much it really impacts, not just when they're having a hard time, but their caregivers are having a hard time, and as a community, there's more stress and struggling. So one of the things that we see a lot is a kid who's really struggling, they don't want to talk about stuff sometimes at home as much, because they're, everybody's stressed at home, and they don't want to stress their parents out, and so it's, it's, we're all finding a way to be together as a community, but it is something that we're addressing every day in the schools, and it's an important context, so.
Thank you, Dr. Helbert. I'd like to ring of that. So anyway, I'd like to just discuss a little bit what we're seeing at our schools all over the county. We're seeing a lot of obstacles as far as a lot of stress and anxiety with students, as well as, you know, we're seeing a lot of that with our teachers as well. We're also seeing a lot of grief and loss. We're seeing stress, we're seeing loneliness, suicidal ideation, just, just a lot of various things that are concerning for all of us. And, you know, students are so resilient, thankfully, and it is just, it's really a pleasure. I can remember when the students came back from two days to four days, and it was like, it's on. It was just such a rush, it gave me such energy, I believe, as you had spoken earlier, on how, it was just, it was life-giving. This is what we do. This is what we, we want to support, take care of students, and we want to work on taking care of our HLA students as well. That's been a little tougher, but we are reaching out through the virtual aspect and able to reach some of those students. So we feel very fortunate, and we're very thankful that we have such a supporting school board, as well as Becky Hill Schiflett and Mr. Eric Fitzgerald. So, thanks.
Research, research shows that school mental health services are integral to student success, because we know that mental health directly affects the development and learning of children and adolescents. For some students, school may be the only place they have access to mental health services, and for many students, their experiences with their school counselor may be their first and only experience receiving mental health support. And the earlier a young person can access mental health care, the more effective it can be. Research shows that early treatment and support can help keep youth in school and on track to achieving their goals. It's widely known that before learning can take place, students need to have basic needs met. Of course, we all know that with Maslow's. And we know that interventions need to match student need. Research is also showing us that it takes one caring adult to help a student feel more connected at school. Additionally, children whose basic needs are not met are more likely to experience a mental health diagnosis. Therefore, you'll find school counselors collaborating with local churches to provide students with food for the weekend. School counselors may even be found with boxes of food in the back of their personal vehicle, making deliveries to families on their way home. You will notice schools outfitted with clothes and personal hygiene closets, often initiated in partnership with school nurses, and school counselors collaborate with school or community social workers to identify and reduce any barriers that may hinder students' academic success. School counselors are first responders.
So here, on the slide here, you'll see we have thirty-eight school counselors, and we have approximately eleven thousand, six hundred students. And I just want to say thank you, we want to say thank you, because we're gonna be adding two and a half more people to our school counseling force, so that's definitely very much appreciated. And, let's see, Mr. Fitzgerald, I think he is up in the left corner there, the upper-left corner, so he's leading us. That was our, in our last, we have monthly school counseling meetings where we start off together and then we kind of break off. So middle and high school, Mr. Fitzgerald takes care of, leading that, and then Ms. Becky Hill Schiflett, she takes care of the elementary school counselors as well. So just a little visual as far as all of us collaborating, communicating, creativity, and we, we enjoy what we do.
So, one of the things that I have loved to, about the counseling field and getting to be part of Training and Counselor Education Summit is that there's core tenants and core skills that are foundation about what a counselor is, our core tenants. And then there's different tracks. So there's school counseling and mental health counseling, addiction counseling, and I remember my professors always said it's so important to be able to identify who you are professionally, professional identity. So this has some, the Ask a School model and some things, but we found this quote that we thought very well fit. So, "School mental health professionals and school counselors are specially trained in the interconnectivity among school law, school system, functioning, learning, mental health, and family systems. This training ensures that mental health services are properly and effectively infused into the learning environment, supporting both instructional leaders, teachers' ability to provide a safe school setting, and the optimum conditions for teaching and learning. No other professionals have this unique training and background."
There are many functions of a school counselor, and we often like to say that we wear many hats, or a function like a thread in a tapestry. In our role, we do so much more than just provide guidance. We work closely with students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members toward the common goal of the success and well-being of all of our students. Our students are learning in an interconnected and complex world, with tools and information readily available to them at earlier ages than ever before. We also know that today's learner will become tomorrow's entrepreneur, employee, employer, healthcare worker, first responder, you get the picture. As school counselors, we participate in crisis management and intervention, student advocacy, individual career and academic planning, individual and small group counseling, academic support services, at-risk student identification, intervention supports, peer mediation, classroom guidance, professional development, maintenance of school climate, development and nurturing of relationships, consultation, collaboration, and much more.
School counselors across the division focus on a holistic approach to supporting students in their growth and development while fostering resilience. So we still keep those Character Council pillars, and we add much, much more.
So here is just a brief example of any RCPAS school counselors' to-do list each day. If you were to visit any school this week, first thing in the morning, as students are arriving, you will always find a school counselor by a student drop-off or in the hallways, welcoming students to school. Not only are they greeting each student as they walk by, but they are intentionally assessing student affect and school climate of that morning, making mental note of which student needs to be added to that check-in list. Though there may be differences at the elementary, middle, and high school levels regarding the balance of academic, career, and social and emotional learning. An example would be elementary spends a lot more time in the classroom, working on developing pro-social behaviors, whereas high school spends more time on postgraduate planning. One thing that remains the same, when a student crisis arises, everything else gets put on hold. While it's nice to be able to check things off a list, it is critical to ensure the safety and well-being of our students. School counselors have seen an increase in mental health crisis, for example, self-harm, suicide ideation, and many more, over the years, with onset beginning as early as the elementary level. While a crisis may take up hours of our day as we work to support the students and their families, helping them navigate next steps, making connections with outside resources such as crisis services, and following up with that student and the family in the days and weeks, and sometimes months to come. The relationships we make with students leave the largest impact on us. We think about our students long after we have been home with our own families, and even years after they leave our school. We regularly have to do the hard things by calling home, making parents aware of heartbreaking situations, and being a cry and shoulder for both the parents and the students.
I often talk about how as school counselors, I feel like we have more awkward conversations than most people, most professions than I know. So, one of the things I want to, or we all want to highlight, is that we work as a team. So we get to work with the early intervention specialists and counselors, who are wonderful. We collaborate with outpatient mental health professionals and try to help with referrals and to pass that along, because the mental health system can be very overwhelming for families to navigate as well, so. And with the anticipation of ongoing struggles, I think one of the things that we're hopeful is that we also have more mental health supports in the community as well, eventually to support us and the, and the needs. So us as in the whole school, not just school counselors.
As you all know, this year, more now than ever, we've been stretched beyond our capacity within the schools or in our community, with our social interactions and our academic rigor. And school counselors in our schools are working tirelessly to promote hope, resilience, and connection with our schools. And I just wanted to highlight just a few things that we are seeing within our schools. we are seeing within our school county right now. I know many of you are aware that over at Riverbend Elementary School, just across the parking lot, they just reached a world record, and that was initiated and facilitated by a school counselor. Her effort was to bring playfulness and connection amongst the staff, as well as the students and the families. We've got Mr. Wilson over at Peak View, who you can regularly see him with his guitar in the hallway, and has, over the stay-at-home time, has created videos for his students for them to watch, making music. Jackie Dunsmore at South River continues with her community circles, which she's known for, and, and using, using those as an instrument to build connection even in the midst of the spacing that's required in the masking. I think in all elementary, middle, and high school, one of the biggest things that we realize, that same concept, if mom is not okay at home, then the family's not okay. If our teachers are not okay, if our faculty and staff are not okay, then our students are going to be affected by that. So, we have put more effort than ever before in supporting our faculty and staff, whether that's educating them and creating that mental health toolkit, and on self-care, but also in providing opportunities, often on Wednesdays, when they are participating in meetings. Some of those self-care activities include mindful moments, or a tea time, opportunities to paint and interact with each other.
So, on behalf of school counselors in Rockingham County public schools, we'd just like to say thank you. Thank you for supporting the eighty-twenty. We're getting there, we're getting closer and closer each year, so thank you very much for that. And also, Ms. Becky Hill Schiflett had mentioned that May is mental health awareness, so we're going to be doing some things with our students with that and just continue the work. It is, it's, it's never done, but we, we certainly do enjoy what we do, and we're very thankful that we are back at least four days out of the week, and hopefully, hopefully next year will be five, so. I'll leave, I want to leave everybody with this. You know, as school counselors, we understand that relationships are huge. You know, in order for a student to open up, whether elementary, middle, or high, that student has to feel like they can trust someone, and there's times in our buildings that, you know, teachers have great relationships, obviously, with, with our students, as Eric had mentioned, and so it's, it's very important for students to feel like they can trust someone, and a lot of times, we're on the front lines there, and the more consistent we can see students on a day-to-day basis, I think the better the relationship can be, and we can do more as far as strategies and coping skills and those types of things. So, so anyway, I'll just share a brief story. We were doing career and academic plans with, with seventh graders, and some students we don't get to see a whole lot because, you know, they just kind of fly underneath the radar, they get very good grades, and they're not a behavioral issue, and they don't really come to us for, for many things, so there's, you know, a percentage of students that we really don't get to see that much. Thankfully, we have things in place through our state that requires us to, to, to reach out and, and look at and provide academic and career planning. And so, we were having a conversation with a student at Hilliard, and, and it just kind of, we wanted to talk to them, talk to that person, and, and just build a rapport. We just didn't want it to be about the career, career planning piece, we wanted it to be more of a relationship and really see how that person is doing. And so, at the end of the, the conversation, found out that the student really likes Star Wars, and Star Wars has been around for a while, and the student looked at the counselor and says, "May the force be with you," and then she says, "And also with you." It was, it was just, it just really meant a lot to me because that relationship was built, and he felt confident in kind of going outside of his, his area of, of comfort to say something like that, and then she just responded so quickly, and, and just, you know, just basically, just felt, made him feel very comfortable, so. Anyway, we just, again, like to thank each of you. I know it's been a long, long day, it's a beautiful day out there, hopefully we'll, we'll enjoy maybe a little bit of it, but thank you again for all that you do. Mr. Eric Fitzgerald and Ms. Becky Hill Schiflett, we are led by some of the, the best people, I call them legends in the county, and so, thank you very much.
I do want to make a quick comment because when I talked earlier about student support, you know, this happened at council meetings sometimes, we talk a lot about what we've added, and we don't talk as often about what we already have, right? And that needs to be recognized, and, you know, when we talk about the early intervention counselors we've been able to have through CSB, you know, board-certified behavior analysts, behavior specialists, behavior support assistants, all of those pieces are there because they support a community of care, but that community of care also involves psychologists, social workers, nurses, and school counselors, and I think it's really fitting that over the last few years, that terminology has changed, that it's not guidance counselor, it's a huge mental and behavioral health role, and you play that, and so, like you said earlier, as a first responders, I've seen it, I went to Spotswood a couple of years ago, student crisis, literally, everything stops for the counselors, and I've talked to Michelle at RA, and just some of the work you do, so it's appreciated and it's recognized, and just because we talk about the pieces we've been able to add with the help of this board, you know, that doesn't mean that it's not recognized what you do every day, right? And your key piece to that, the ratios are changing, right, they're changing slowly, but I think that's also responsible, because for us, the biggest concern is, okay, if we have to hire twelve new counselors, that means across the state, the one hundred and thirty-two school divisions, are there enough counselors there? You know, are there enough graduates of the programs? And so, it's better to do it slowly and have the rock stars that we have, rather than quickly doing it and then really not providing the service that students need, or not even finding counselors. There are school divisions that have waited six months and haven't been able to even get an applicant for a school counselor position, so, you know, that's important to know, but when we talk about student systems of support and what we've built, it's built on top of all the work you do, and so, please don't ever take that in a way that it's not appreciated what you do. Without you, none of that is possible either, so, thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. I'll extend my thanks also to all of you for the hard work that you do. You know, it's been, we've slowly built over the last three, four years, but if you think about what happened about twelve, thirteen years ago, when the budget really took a hit, and we actually had to reduce positions in this particular area, and the pain that that caused, and the amount of time it took for us to get back and then start this process on top of it, and as Dr. Scheikle said, on top of it now, the issues with, we don't have as many students coming through programs, even graduate programs in social services because they're shying away from it because of the, the level of work, it takes a special person to do that, and so, you know, it's, we're going, it's going to catch up, but we're going to continue to work very hard here in Rockingham County to support all of you and the awesome work that you're doing, and we, as long as I'm on this board for the next eight months, we are not sliding back, there's no way, so we're going to continue to move forward as much as we can to give you the support that you need, so, thank you. All right, board members, in your packet, you have the attendance report from March twenty twenty-one. We'll move into other business, school board questions or comments. Mr. Breeden.
No comments.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. McQuilkin?
Pass.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Ms. Lohr?
Just thank you to everyone for working so hard, and it takes everyone to make Rockingham County Public Schools this great, and I appreciate each and every one of you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Mr. Falk?
I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Scheikle?
Ms. Hamm, thank you for being here, right? I look around the room, and it's staff and Ms. Hamm still here to observe the meeting, so that's, gets recognized, thank you for serving on the CAC, and thank you for your continued advocacy. As you know, you know, we have a broad range of needs, and, and we do want to serve as much as we can, but I also want to thank Ms. Reed for the service that she's given to the school division, the service she's going to continue to give to the school division, and that's as much as I want to say right now, and we'll certainly have private conversations to talk about the reasons why it is becoming not always healthy to serve on the school board.
Thank you. Actually, I told you, I thought, Dr. Scheikle, you were going to wish me happy birthday, but that's okay.
It's one of those bockhak to do.
It is my birthday today, I won't tell you how many circles around I've done, but that's okay, so, I think that's it, I don't have anything to add at this point. We have reason to enter into closed meeting, board members, if you could, if somebody can make a motion for us to do that.
I move that the board enter a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A one to discuss and consider personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries five zero, we're in closed session. Thank you for joining us this evening, safe travels home, hope you have a good week, looks like the weather's going to be fantastic. Lots of kids on the playground, Mr. Boyer's right.